Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your punctuality. This is the March 27, 2023 Board of Education meeting. I want to start by pointing out the exits. We have two exits in the rear of the room and then two exits behind us here at the dais. Let's all stand for the pledge. Okay, so we're actually going to get tonight's meeting started off with a bang on a very positive note. The Board of Education would like to recognize four very special, well-deserving Cornwall Central High School students for their recent achievements in the arts and athletics. And for more, I will pass it on to Superintendent Dade.
Thank you, Mr. Cardy. So we're going to start with Mr. Simo and Mr. Piazza to recognize an individual who has gone way above and beyond what any of us would hope for in a successful wrestling season. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to them.
User error. User error. Me. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Dade. Can I have Tyler Reed and Coach Pickel up to the front, please? So we'd first like to start, I'll say a few words about Tyler. Tyler is the 2023 New York State Wrestling Champion in the 160-pound weight class. Tyler had an incredible run at the New York State Wrestling Tournament. Tyler trailed 5-0 in the championship match, but showed incredible heart and determination, and eventually came back to claim a 6-5 victory and the state title. Now I will pass it on to Mr. Simo, who has a few more words to share about Tyler.
Thank you very much. So it's ironic that we're here again and honoring another state champion. And my biggest takeaway of having the opportunity and the honor to be here with you tonight is the fact that we can really talk about, and Tyler exemplifies this, that excellence is not a part-time thing. It's an all-the-time thing. Tyler is an individual that is also a member of our Student-Athlete Leadership Council. He's an integral part in one of the events with Naming of the Dragon and some fun things, but also the Community Day, the Cornwall Dragon Day that we're trying to put together in May, and we're very excited about that. And Tyler's work, his relentless effort, is something that you see in everything that he's a part of. When I talked to Tyler after the match, you know, being down 5-0 in the state championship, that's a pretty big deal because you're going against somebody else that's worthy of being a state champion. And when I asked Tyler, "What separated you?", he said, you know, "Every wrestler has something that they're really good at, their strength, especially in that meet." He said, "Some guys were a lot stronger than I was. Some guys are faster than I was. Some guys were more technical than I was." He said, "But the one thing that I knew I had is that I was willing to grind longer than anybody else." And he said, "Nobody will match me when it comes to that." And that speaks to the person that he is. And Tyler, I can tell you, it's going to speak to your future too, because I know you're destined for greatness in anything that you ever put your mind to. So on behalf of our athletic department, our school, I just want to say congratulations, and we're so extremely proud of you. Coach, same to you and your program and everything that you guys represent. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I hope everybody's ready for some more up and down because we have three more All-State students to talk about. Next up, I want to recognize and call up to the stage Matty Diarco and Carson McLendon, along with Mr. Ravinsky, our music director. Matty and Carson were selected for the NISMAllstate chorus this year. They also are coming off a fantastic performance in this weekend's CCHS musical, "Anything Goes." I'd like to kick it off to Mr. Ravinsky to speak a little bit more about these two talented young ladies.
Thank you so much. Thank you for honoring these two. They worked extremely hard over their last years of being a musician because it's definitely not one thing that you can just turn on a switch and have an audition. It doesn't just happen that way. Last spring is when their major audition was. It was through the NISMAll Solo Festival where thousands and thousands of kids around New York State auditioned for very few slots. I think it was only 250 in the chorus this year. And so they were two of the 250 students that were selected from around New York State to participate in the All-State Chorus. The audition is a very intensive solo plus a sight-reading example where they've never seen the music before they go in. And both of them perfected everything. It was really one of those things where going into the audition, all of last year, I would do like, you know, small auditions for a solo in a piece. And I would literally turn my back because I didn't want to see who I was hearing. And they know this, and both of their voices all year were driving me crazy because they sounded the same to me. And I'm like, "I don't know who to select." And they ended up both auditioning with the exact same solo for the exact same adjudicator. I'm like, "Okay, this adjudicator will differentiate them for me." Didn't. A hundred for both of them. They were exceptional in both of their solos. And the adjudicator even couldn't tell it apart. And Dan Lee did great jobs and represented us well up at Rochester this year. So the Rochester Allstate is definitely less than 10% of all the musicians who audition. And I congratulate you guys on this achievement. So congratulations, and I wish you all the best, and I hope you both keep singing next year. So that's always our goal. So thank you very much. Congratulations.
So I'm going to bring up next, we have Shane Bywater and Mr. Jake Hoover. Jake is our band director, jazz combo advisor. Shane Bywater was selected for the New York State Band Directors Association Honor Ensemble this year. Shane was the only guitarist selected in all of New York State. That just shows you what a talent he is. So congratulations, Shane. And Mr. Hoover is going to share some words.
The NISMAllstate ensemble is put together in a very similar way as to Allstate-NISM. So last year, Shane spent months preparing a very rigorous solo as well and had a fantastic score, fantastic grade. He unfortunately did not make Allstate, but he was highly qualified for the NISMAll honors ensemble out in Syracuse. So this is an 18-person jazz ensemble from all over the state, of which they only take one guitarist, and that is this guy right here. So they met for three days over the course of March 3rd to the 5th. They worked with the head of jazz instruction from the Eastman School of Music and prepared some incredible, incredible music. Shane performed at an exceedingly high level, so much that other band directors from other schools even contacted Mr. Piazza to comment on his performance. He played at such a high level that the conductor was, you know, making him do even more things than the other people in the ensembles. What was so great about that was seeing him questioned, seeing him be involved, and speak a whole lot more than I see him speak on a daily basis. So that was kind of refreshing. But overall, congratulations, Shane. I wish you the best. And you did just such a great job at this solo festival, at this honors ensemble. Well done.
I'm glad I don't have to tell all of you, but you can leave if you want. I know that you don't have to stick around for the workings of local school government if you don't want to. All right. We will continue with our first recognition of visitors. There will be two opportunities for public comment at tonight's meeting, now and at the end. The first session will be capped at 30 minutes total. Anyone who does not get to speak now will be able to do so later. Comments including obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, or statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Anyone wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present those comments or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. Finally, please remember, there is no cross dialogue between speakers and members of the board. And anyone wishing to speak is invited to step forward to the microphone, identify yourself, and limit comments to three minutes. And if you would like to leave your contact information for a direct response, you can do so at the board dais next to Linda. Thank you.
Barb Agosta. The last time I was here, I mentioned about the $5 million in federal rescue aid that the district received. And we really haven't talked about, or the community hasn't heard, is exactly what the district did with that money. It's clear that you didn't buy the Chromebooks with it, and we only have them from 7th grade up anyway. But also, I mean, we had some additional teaching staff from January '22 and then the 1,281 hours for this year. But what else did we do with that funding? That was for the learning loss and to rescue the students from the pandemic. It really would be, I think, before we get into a new budget and you ask more of the community, that it would be really transparent for the board to come forward with the information on that $5 million. It's, you know, how much can we do? And we need to know where the money goes. I hope that the board would consider this significant. It's certainly not, it's not just, you know, play money here. And it's not for the wish list. It was for the students, to rescue them from this pandemic. So how did we use it? And I just have one other thing. Mr. Cardy, I sent you an email a couple of weeks ago, and I asked for some information about the fees attached to the elementary drama program. And I hope that at some point you'll be able to answer that for me. Okay, thank you.
Well, good evening. I'd first like to introduce myself. My name is John Evans, and I'm a resident and taxpayer and parent of two youngsters here in the Cornwall School District. I'd first like to thank the board and the Assembly here for your service to the community. When we came to the idea that there was going to be a UPK situation in Cornwall, our superintendent was in the midst of dealing with the pandemic, remote learning, changing everything that he possibly could have understood as what his job was going to be. And then UPK got thrown onto his plate. And trying to figure out, how are we going to institute a brand-new system to have our youngest scholars have a place to get started was hard. This is not just like running a fantasy football draft. We actually have to go through and qualify the vendors, figure out if their facility is going to meet what our needs are, actually institute a way of having applications and verify that these children actually are qualified for what they're applying for. So it was a lot, and I'd like to commend Mr. Dade for taking that on and doing it very, very well. We're now in the second year of having state funding for the UPK program. And right now, for those of you that don't know, there were 60 families that were awarded positions in the UPK program for the fall. And congratulations to them because that's great. These are children and their families and their parents that are going to not have that personal burden. Having a three- or a four- or a five-year-old, I can tell you, it's very expensive to have the care that's put in place so you can go about your life. Over the course of the year, it's at least $10,000. And the state is putting together $5,500 and asking the board to meet the delta there. Currently, there are 60 funded slots. We have room for more. And making sure that every dollar that's available from the state is matched and that delta is matched in the budget, it's crucial. So I would like to tell the board that whatever steps need to be taken to meet that delta so that we have more spots and more room for our youngest learners to have a great start, that's what we need to do. How much is your son or daughter's education worth? I think we know what the answer is. It's priceless. So let's do what needs to be done. Thank you.
All right, great. Hi, good evening. My name is Caitlin Nolan, 7th grade ELA teacher at Cornwall Central Middle School. I just want to give another promotion for our multicultural night taking place at Cornwall Central High School this Wednesday, 5:30 to 7:30. It's open to all UPK and Grade 12 students and families. Just a sneak peek, I don't want to give too much away. Oh, it was Neon Day at the middle school, so this isn't just my Monday attire, but I'm looking like a highlighter right now. But that's okay. It grabs your attention, though, doesn't it? We'll be having Irish step dancers from our Cornwall Central Middle School program, a Bob Marley song performance. We will have Filipino and Dominican Republic karaoke, as well as Brazilian dance, a recorder performance from our very own Cornwall and Hudson Elementary musicians, merengue, traditional Chinese dance and music, as well as bagpipers. The food, of course. We will have tastings from all over the world, including Western and Eastern Europe, the Middle East. Latin food is... Asia, Africa, and Jamaican and Northern Mariana Islands. So the really cool part, too, is that we have over 30 volunteers from our Cornwall Central High School. And it's a brilliant way for our community to come together. Everything is donated, everything is volunteer. And I'm just, a huge thank you to Mrs. Argino, Mr. Joe Debold, the Leadership Council at the high school. I'll have the pleasure of speaking with them on Wednesday about the volunteer jobs they'll be doing. Everybody involved, the PTO, incredible amount of volunteer work has been poured into this, and it's just a great night. So again, 5:30 to 7:30 this Wednesday, Cornwall Central High School. Be there for a great evening of celebrating what makes Cornwall great, and that's us coming together. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm part of the UPK advocacy group here in Cornwall. I just wanted to add to what John Evans said there. We'd like to advocate for an additional 40 slots. So what we're asking for, in addition to what John already quite elaborately said, is for the board to vote for that for the 2023-2024 UPK year so that our kiddos can have the best star possible. Yeah, go ahead, Jenna. Say hi. Okay, so there you go. For the kiddos that are for that deserve it, they should have it. So I'm hoping you guys can have your vote for that for this year for budget season. Thank you. Yes, go ahead, baby. Say hi.
Mic check. I'm used to speaking through these in my organization. Eric Laurenti, also a taxpayer, eloquently put earlier. I moved here several years ago. I grew up inner-city. So education opportunities were often, you know, underfunded, very poor off where I grew up. And a primary reasoning for us moving here, myself, my fiancee, was at the time, she was pregnant. And we moved here because we sought for better education opportunities. That was first and foremost the leading reason for why we moved to this specific school district. And over the years, excited at the opportunities that, you know, my son would eventually have. You know, I've read, you know, all the sports accolades that have come from this school district. So pardon me if I'm a little frustrated. You know, I don't, for future state, this concept of lottery for our children, the only time I want to do lottery is when I'm playing Powerball. Our children are not lottery. So this notion, if we were only going to select 60 children, and it was going to be that limited, I think many of us could have made a little bit of time for a Zoom call, in-person, you know, visual, and just to put some more integrity in the process. You know, my son is not a random drawing, and I would appreciate it if for future state, we don't treat 107 kids as though they are lottery because they're not. I also would advocate that we should open up more space for these children. 47 children is one too many, of which aren't going to essentially be going, opportunity to go through UPK. You know, so I think that there's already systemic issues in the system when it comes to education. You know, I think we can lead by example and ensure that our children have every opportunity necessary to have their education. So, you know, I would also, you know, implore that you all come up with a decision to help the 47 children that are, quite frankly, you know, still being managed as though they're lottery. So, you know, that's my two cents.
All right, and thank you, everybody. There will be a second opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting. So I'd like to answer just some questions very quickly. I'll start with Ms. Agosta. You mentioned the $5 million in federal aid. That has been referenced in different presentations where all that money has gone and been allocated. Mr. Dade gave a presentation particularly on the one-to-one initiative in which that was referenced. in which that was referenced, Ms. Argino has also given, has referenced it in a larger academic presentation. I will, between now and next meeting, I will try to condense that into a response that's a little bit more packaged. But the information has been out there in different ways. It certainly hasn't been an effort to conceal that in any way. Regarding the question you asked me through email, your question was essentially, what is the fee for the drama programs? So you mentioned that students at the COH program were charged $100 each. That is the case at CES. I only know that because I'm involved in the program here. I don't know what the fees are district-wide. These drama programs are run by school through the PTOs. So they're not actually, it's not universal across the district. So a child will pay a fee, which will cover some hard costs, but then the rest of it is run by volunteers, of which I am one myself. So I don't know, if you're seeking any information beyond that, feel free to follow up, but that's a direct answer to your question. And finally, just to clarify something, the last speaker, Mr. Laurenti, the lottery process is mandated by New York State. So it's not, this isn't designed here in the district. So, and it has to be a blind lottery. Again, that's just part of the mandate that comes with that funding support. But I know, I don't want to step on Superintendent Dade's shoes. That's it for the public comment responses. I will pass it to him for his superintendent's update. I'm sorry, I'm passing over Colton Barry for, we'll put a pin in that for a second. So Colton is actually going to deliver the student reports for all schools. Peter's out today. So, Colton, I will pass it on to you.
This is the Good News for Cornwall and Hudson Elementary School. On March 7, 91 4th grade band and orchestra students participated in the instrumental recital held at COH. All of the students had fun preparing for this event and enjoyed showing off their hard work. Musical selections included folk songs, pop tunes, selections from Harry Potter, Encanto, and Star Wars. All had a good time. PARP, Pick a Reading Partner, is in full swing at COH. It started on March 3 and will conclude on March 26. This year's theme is Book Madness. The number of minutes that each student reads are being recorded and will be converted to points. The class with the most points will be rewarded. So far, the kindergartners have read 3,483 minutes. The 1st grade has read 5,291 minutes. The 2nd grade has read 4,725 minutes. The 3rd grade has read 3,700 minutes. And the 4th grade has read 3,655 minutes. Keep up the good work. During the afternoon on March 7, the Student Council walked to the district office and visited the superintendent. Each student prepared two questions for Mr. Dade. The students learned many interesting things about the leader of our district. For example, how he became inspired to become a superintendent, his favorite sports teams, his favorite color, and what he wants to do in his retirement, and the many hard decisions he had to make being the superintendent. The students thoroughly enjoyed his company. On March 21, COH recognized World Down Syndrome Awareness Day by wearing mismatched socks. March 21 was selected to signify the uniqueness of the triplication, trisomony, of the 21st chromosome, which causes Down syndrome. In 2013, the theme of wearing mismatched socks was initiated to raise awareness about Down syndrome. The idea was created because chromosomes are shaped like socks, and people with Down syndrome have an extra chromosome. On March 28, the Student Council is planning on participating in the Stand Up program. Students from the Safe School Ambassador Program at the high school lead elementary and middle school students in a series of workshops about bullying prevention. The 4th graders involved are bringing back the information they learned to the students of COH. A second session will be held on April 11. Congratulations to the cast of Beauty and the Beast Jr. You all did a fantastic job, and the audience was thoroughly entertained. We are all very proud of you. Thank you to the many PTO volunteers who made the production possible.
This is the Cornwall Elementary School Good News. After a refreshing February recess, our school has been working hard during the month of March. Some of our classes planned special lessons to commemorate the Super Bowl. Mrs. Creasey's 2nd grade class decorated their classroom and went to our steam room for a fun activity with Mrs. Ankerdunk. The students were given a set of supplies and tasked with figuring out how to create a launcher and set up goalposts that would successfully work and score a field goal. Mrs. Noonan's 4th grade class also celebrated the Super Bowl with a football-themed day. They learned about the history of the Super Bowl by completing a web quest, used evidence to support their Super Bowl winner predictions, collaborated with students from Mrs. Simmons' class to complete a breakout room, and played a football-themed math review where they tackled rigorous questions released from last year's New York State math exam. It was a fun day of learning. During the last weeks, Mrs. Aguilar's kindergarten class has been studying needs versus wants and the services that can be found in our community. Parents of the students have been visiting the classroom to discuss what types of service/goods they provide. So far, the children have learned about being a transit police officer, a notary public, an HVAC repairman, an NYPD detective, a firefighter, and a voiceover talent, and many more. The students have loved sharing their parents' work with the class and have been learning so much. We also celebrated the 100th day of school this past month. It is incredible how quickly the school year is going by. Our PTO tasked our students with dressing up like they were 100 years old to commemorate the day. Even some of our teachers and staff joined in on the fun. On the 102nd day of school, Mrs. Osborne's class celebrated the fun with 100 themed activities, such as stacking 100 cups and building towers with 100 conversion hearts. Students were asked to cooperate and be helpful to one another. It wasn't as easy as you might think. Mrs. Gleason and Mrs. Prechow's classes went to Black Rock Forest to do their winter observation. They observed and documented the soil, air, and water temperatures, checked the pH of the water, and looked for signs of wildlife. Although the trip was postponed due to bad weather, the day they went was as beautiful as a winter wonderland. They were able to roll snowballs until they couldn't push them any longer and piled them up, leaving behind a line of snowmen. So much learning and fun was had by all. To kick off Women's History Month, Mrs. Simmons' class read the incredible story Hidden Figures by Margaret Lee Shutterly about the four highly intelligent women who helped NASA's astronauts make it to the moon. While reading, they used their ELA skills to record the sequence of events. Then they acted as astronauts by coding a rocket ship's journey through space, dodging obstacles to get to the finish line. After this very busy month, we are looking forward to the CCSD Annual Multicultural Night, a hopefully warm spring recess in our 2023 STEAM Expo at the high school.
This is Willow Avenue Elementary School Good News. We kicked off March with our Read-a-thon with Dr. Seuss Week. Students dressed in themes based on the Dr. Seuss books of the day, including The Cat in the Hat, If I Ran to the Zoo, and The Pajama Book. We are continuing our love of reading with our March Madness of books. Each day, students will listen to a picture book being read by a staff member at the end of the day. At the end of each week, they will vote on their favorite book. The last week of March, we will vote on our top three books in the bracket to crown the winning book. Our 4th grade instrument students wowed us with their musical talents at the combined 4th grade instrumental recital. We are all incredibly proud of their hard work. The 3rd and 4th grade classes have been learning about immigration and took a trip to Ellis Island as their culminating event for the unit. They participated in an immersed experience, the journey. Many of them dressed as immigrants, and the park rangers took them through many tests that immigrants had to pass to get approved for a mission into our country. In physical education, we are competing in Mission Impossible. Students are practicing teamwork, cooperation, patience, and perseverance. Lastly, our students are practicing their talents and drama skills for our upcoming talent show and drama production of 101 Dalmatians Jr. on April 14. It's going to be an amazing show.
This is Cornwall Central Middle School Good News. In March, students at CCMS have celebrated our diversity with Foreign Language Week. Students had the opportunity to celebrate their heritage and the many languages our students and families speak. The LOTE department held contests and trivia. The CCMS Drama Club presented Alice in Wonderland the Musical. Performing to sold-out shows, our students brought to life the story of Alice falling through the rabbit hole into the magic fantasy world. Thank you to Mrs. Moulton, Mrs. Horn, Mr. Baxter, Mrs. Firestone, and all of our amazing parent volunteers who helped our students have a truly magical performance. CCMS welcomed Mrs. Serena Byger and Ms. Sarah Bain to speak with our 7th grade and 8th grade students about the dangers of drug use and addiction last month. Both of them had firsthand personal knowledge of what it is like living with and then losing somebody who is addicted to drugs. The presentation focused on the dangers of our drug use and the importance of choices. This assembly was followed by Mrs. Clyde, our district-wide counselor and former substance abuse counselor, who is pushed into doing lessons with 7th and 8th grade classes.
Thank you, Colton. And I know that you're in a busy academic period now, so I think if you want to excuse yourself, you can do that. Thanks. All right, so it's time for our superintendent's update, so I will pass it on to Terry.
Thank you. So timely. I figured that there would be folks coming out for UPK, because we ran the lottery last Thursday. Families weren't notified on Friday morning whether they secured one of the 60 slots. So I just have two different points to provide the Board and community. One is just kind of not necessarily for the Board, but for those that may want to help advocate at the state level. My opinion of what's needed, I already spoke with Jim about this, who already did some work advocating at the state level on our behalf. And then the second half is just providing details that the Board will need to make decisions come April 10 in the meeting after. So first, just by way of just my opinion, it's easy to just say that the letter is UPK without diving into what that truly is. UPK is universal pre-kindergarten. Unfortunately, the state has not provided us with the funding across the entire state to make it truly universal. If it were truly a universal pre-kindergarten, every single parent in the district with a four-year-old would have a voucher to take to any provider of their choice and have a seat in that organization. So until we get to that point, it's always going to be, unfortunately, the district and the Board of Education figuring out how much it can allocate in addition to the needs of our K through 12 students, which you heard from Mr. Sotlin before. We have about 2.6 million in needs and not nearly enough to cover that as well. So universal pre-K is another need that we've already identified, but it's weighing priorities and how much we can actually allocate and be fiscally responsible for our taxpayers. So there was an article from Albany, the Albany Times, which interviewed superintendents and boards in that area. And their frustration was, they, out of all the seats that have been allocated to the Albany area, they're facing the same thing that we are. Less than 50% of those seats have been filled because those schools don't have space to house the universal pre-kindergarten students. So something you heard me talk about last year is I want to bring those seats in-house where we can have our teachers educate, have some of our community partners continue to help us out, but it shouldn't be totally dependent on outside providers providing our education for our students. So I've, I worked with Jim to make this clear to Senator Skoufis and those that would listen. My advocacy is, don't keep increasing the seats. Our 107 applicants, we have more seats allocated than that, so that's just unused money sitting at the state level that we could find better use for if we increased the per-pupil allocation for our families to actually be able to find a provider of their choice. So my advocacy, again, you add another 40 seats, we don't need them. We have far exceeded the need in Cornwall just based on the seat allocation that the state is providing. What we would appreciate is an increase in the per-pupil that would allow the Board to increase easily the seats that are allocated for our families that are so deserving of these seats. So I'll step off the soapbox at that moment, at this moment, but universal pre-K is nowhere near universal in the state of New York. So second, just to remind everyone of the journey that we've been on. Last year was our first year of UPK in the Cornwall Central School District. We were, we put together a very successful program. We are exceptionally ecstatic with our three providers. Last year, we had 93 total applications. Seventeen of those applicants declined or were not of age. So this is an important piece that I need the Board to realize. Just because you have applicants applying for UPK does not mean that they're getting the provider of their choice. So of those 17, a lot of those 17 are declining seats because they did not get the provider that was their first choice. So you may get a seat awarded for your second or third choice, and those families are either choosing to go with that provider or saying, "I decline because I really want Butterhill," or "I decline because I really want Windsor," or "I decline because I really wanted Ark of Learning." That's a really, really, really important piece to keep in mind. Just because you expand by 20 or 40 doesn't mean all 20 or 40 are going to accept those slots because the slots at their provider is not guaranteed. Really, really important. So last meeting, two meetings ago, I stated to the Board that if we had opened up another full classroom of UPK, we would not have fulfilled our promise. There were 18 families left on the waitlist at the end of the last cycle. We would not have filled the 20 seats. Even if I had opened 20, I question how many of the 18 would have accepted whatever provider we brought onboard at that point. Really, really important for you to wrap your head around. So this year, we ran a lottery for 60 slots. We increased by two. In Harvey's presentation on February 12, we allocated a line in our needs assessment, so we already knew that there would be a need to increase seating. He quoted the additional 22 UPK seats that we felt that we might need this year, and the cost was approximately $85,000. So again, the Board is going to be presented with additional teachers, additional staff members, additional programs, and this will need to fit into that discussion of what are we going to support next year and to what level. We've already identified it as a need, so if we increased by 22 seats, it would be approximately 85K. We already ran the lottery. I told you we would do that because I needed more data to see if we could actually need to fulfill those 22 seats. Imagine the turnout if I had awarded 22 extra seats and we didn't quite have the ability to meet that through the budget. So we are still able to do an RFP to reach back out to each family. Every family has a number, so their spot is secure on the waitlist. So if we were to bring another, additional slots onboard with another provider or another provider expand their seats, we would be able to work with our waitlist to accommodate X number of families to the Board's choosing. There were 112 total applications this year, 110 on time. That's just my OCD. Lottery was held last Thursday for 60 slots. Forty-eight of those 60 offers have accepted a seat. I'm still awaiting a response from 12. The due date is noon on Friday. So 44 are on the waitlist as of today. Again, that 44 is getting eerily close to discomfort level for me because I just look at how many of the 44 would accept a seat in another classroom. I think we're good right now, but as that number dwindles, I'm not sure how many will accept from the 12. If eight of those 12 that are remaining don't accept a slot, then we would have 36 on the waitlist. So again, you can see the logic that I'm kind of going through, looking at last year's numbers, the acceptance rate compared to this year. So I just wanted you to have all of that information, our current state. And on the 10th, I believe, is the time for the Board to really deliberate all of the needs that were already presented. The Board submitted additional needs, but the 10th, our next meeting, would be really that time to start to prioritize that list.
Thanks, Tay.
Thanks, Terry. If I recall correctly, 12, you haven't heard from 12 from those that won the lottery. Hypothetically, if none of those 12 accept the seat, how would you go about pulling or inviting those who did not win the lottery, the 47? What's the procedure?
So there've already been, how many, there's already been eight that were, were selected in the lottery that could not secure a seat. So I started to go down the waitlist in order that they were chosen. If there were eight more or all 12 didn't, I would continue to go down that list in chronological order and offer them the seat that became available.
So yeah, my question is about the order. What's the order?
So we, we held the lottery, we didn't just hold the lottery for the 60. We ran all 107 that were submitted on time. So every family is in order from one to number 107. Yep.
Terry, I just want to make sure our timelines align with family decision timelines, right? Because at some point, family's going to have to just pull the plug or, or you know, press the button, whatever euphemism you might use. So when will we be able to signal to the public, let's, let's say the board goes down the road, approves 20 extra seats, at what point are we comfortable telling those families that those have been approved? Is that in the middle of May when a budget passes, or would we signal that sooner?
Great question. So we faced this quandary last year. Remember, we were really late last year. So families knew ahead of time. I held a few Zoom meetings just to say dad to parents. The advice that I would give is if you really want a seat at your preferred provider, secure that seat. Don't wait for a lottery to make it happen. If that's, if this is important for your family, reach out to whatever provider and secure that seat. The worst thing that could happen is your child has a seat and you're paying for it. The best thing that could happen is if you secure that seat, win the lottery, and you're not, you're not paying for it. So the same guidance would come from our team now. When they call and ask us, go ahead and submit your application, put in the registration fee, and if additional seats open, we will let you know. Last year, we had the board vote be our signal that we are very confident that we will be able to make this a reality with the caveat that May 22nd was the ultimate. But families really start to get their things in, in order once that board vote came, came to be. We also held the lottery in advance of some key things, all with the caveat that this is all dependent upon community vote. So for everyone listening and for the board, once the board votes, we move, we rock and roll with, we've got to do another RFP or not. Let's, let's figure out the process and things of that nature.
And just as a follow-up to that, and Harvey, you can bake this into the, the schedule, that would really be next meeting, wouldn't it? Or would it be, it actually would be our budget approval meeting. We would discuss it, it would kind of come to a consensus, not voting on it, but consensus to include it in the following meeting. Anybody else? As we said, more to come. It's going to be folded into the budget discussion, so we're going to have plenty of opportunity, I think, to parse this. Okay, great. Thank you, Terry. That brings us to the president's report. The only thing that I want to bring to the board's attention, small, small note about the change of location of our final meetings of the school year. So we have a meeting on May 22nd and June 10th. Those are the two post-budget vote meetings and last meetings of the school year. Originally, those were supposed to be in this room at CES. We are going to move them to the high school, though. The initial reason for the May 22nd move, that's when we'll have the tenure celebrations, and with the auditorium and lobby at the high school, it's just a better space to do that than here where, you know, we're, we're kind of just doing everything in, in one spot. And since our next meeting is just, in June, is just the last meeting of the year anyway, and then we move all of our summer meetings to the high school, just makes more sense to say, okay, after the budget, everything will, will move to the high school. So it's not something that we need, need to do at like an official board resolution on because we've, we're not changing the date. It's just about changing the location. But just giving a heads up to anybody, everyone on the board, so you can make whatever change in plans, I suppose you need to. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Brendan, before you do that, earlier I, I asked a question about something that you needed to talk to the lawyer about. Was, was, were you able to connect on that? It had to do with 30 days?
I have not on that. I think I can get an answer tomorrow. The, what I responded, though, was just a summary of the meeting that we were all in. So I, I mean, I will confirm the details, but I'm confident in the substance of the response in the short term.
Yeah, without having to get into it, so, so.
I will remind that this was the contents of an executive session, so we can't really discuss it.
Exactly. I don't want to get into it, but I do want to understand that the perspective that you walked away with was that there was no response necessary.
John, I'm not comfortable getting into it in any more detail. This is the, the substance of an executive session, so we can follow up individually.
That's what I need follow-up, and you said you'd talk tomorrow?
John, I'm reiterating what I already told you through email, but yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda allows the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover relatively routine matters. Is there any member of the board who would like to pull an item off the consent agenda? Nope. Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda items as submitted by the Superintendent of Schools. That is items 2 through 11. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion carried. That brings us to presentations. So for our third budget presentation of the season, I will hand it over to Harvey.
Good evening. So tonight, we're going to focus on the funding side of the budget. You might recall the last meeting, we spoke about the expenditures, which really is the budget, but now how do we pay for it? Before we do that, though, I just wanted to give, oh, here we go again. This happened last week, or last? Great. Okay. So before we dive into the funding side, I just want to give an update on where we are globally. So from last meeting, if you go all the way to the far right, when we, we talk about the expenditures, we talk about the revenue, we talk about what we're seeing as what we're going to appropriate for fund balance, we had about 1.338 million available for the needs of the district. Move forward to today, it isn't that much different. It's about a couple thousand dollars more for our needs, and that's largely due to some final numbers that we got from BOSIS on some costers. So we have two more meetings that things could change in terms of more information that we receive. So let's shift now to the revenue side. There's three primary buckets that comprise the revenue that we will be using for the budget, as we do every year. The first one is state aid, then you have the school tax levy, and then you have miscellaneous. Specific to the 23-24 revenue projections, the state aid that we're looking to get right now, and this is per the governor's executive proposal. It is not a given yet. The legislature has to come to terms with her, and that would give us the final number. But right now, per her projection, it's about $32 million. The school tax levy is about 51.5, and that reflects a 1% increase in the tax levy. And then we have miscellaneous of 1.1, which is a host of a bunch of different things. So let's look at each one of these different buckets. With regards to state aid, that increase of $6 million, 5.2 of it reflects the increase in foundation aid. Okay. The other thing to keep in mind is that even though the governor and the legislature have not come to terms yet, both houses of the legislature have made their proposals and what their interests are. And the second and third bullet point there, the final state aid figures, as I just mentioned, are not final, but both houses of the legislature have accepted that foundation aid be fully funded this year. So with that said, I don't anticipate any change from that increase, which is really good news. Also, both houses have rejected the high impact set aside for foundation aid. That doesn't mean that we're going to lose that money. It just means that the full bucket, in their minds, is district-designated. Okay? We don't have to parcel out a specific amount for a specific purpose that they have identified, that the governor has identified. Additionally, what they're looking to do, which is oftentimes, you know, just overlooked each year even though it's brought up, is to raise the BOSIS adable salary cap. Now, what is that? So we have a host of different services that we purchase from BOSIS. When any of those services involve personnel, the aid we get on that person, so to speak, or that service, is capped at $30,000 of that person's salary. So if we bring in, you know, let's suppose we send our children out there for a special ed class, and the teacher's making $100,000, we're only getting aid, as every other district, on 30,000 of that. So they're looking to bring that up, which would be great news for us. If we shift now to the school tax levy bucket, as I mentioned, in our projections right now, we're showing a 1% increase. We do have the ability, through the tax cap calculation, that our maximum allowable percentage could be as high as 2.82. We don't foresee going anywhere close to that. Okay? 1% is where we have right now. So what, what does that 1% mean? I've given you a table here that, that breaks it down, and this is based on fair market value of your house, not assessed value. So if you live in a house and you know that you can sell it tomorrow for $350,000, you're looking at an increase of $69 a year. Okay? That's with 1%. Next, let's move to the miscellaneous revenue bucket. And what I can tell you is that 98% of that increase in miscellaneous revenue, which is about 700,000, is attributable to the increase in the interest rates that we earn on our bank accounts. It's a very favorable interest rate environment right now, and we're, we're really reaping the benefits of that. So the final point here is that the state aid is still up in the air. Do I expect huge swings? I really don't expect huge swings, but we never know. So we're waiting on the final state aid figures. Another source of funding for a school district is use of their fund balance and their reserves. So let's go through these. I'm going to talk about each one of these, what they are, and some other, some other information about them. But what I want to point out is that we currently have nine, we have seven reserves and two different fund balances. Okay? Comes to about 16 and a half million. If you look at, I put a three-year history there. If you look at it, it looks pretty good. We're up about $5 million from, from two years ago. But it's really, really important to look at what is being presented here. Capital Reserve Number One at the bottom, that's about $5 million. We know that we've already designated that for a capital project, so that's going to be gone very shortly. We also know the second one down, the assigned fund balance for this year, which the board assigned last year to lower the tax levy, is 4.1. So that's 16. Real quickly, goes down to nine. Okay? I'm sorry, it goes down to seven. Those two items represent 9 million almost. So it brings it down to seven. Then if you look at the very top line, our unsigned fund balance, as I'm going to talk about a little bit, that's like our rainy day fund. We really don't want to touch that. Okay? That's really for, you know, somewhat of a catastrophic situation. So all told, you know, it looks good, which, which it isn't bad, but it's not as great as it might appear. Okay? We still have room to grow in terms of building up these reserves. So let's talk about each one of these. The first one was the unassigned fund balance. Again, this is our rainy day fund. The state limits that amount that we can put into that rainy day fund at 4% of our budget. Can't go higher. So we are at the full 4%. I will tell you that some school districts do go above the 4%, and they do it, they get a slap on the wrist, the state says, please use it. So it does happen. I wish we were in that situation. I'll take that slap on the wrist any day. So that's the unassigned fund balance. The assigned fund balance, again, is what the district uses to help fund the budget and offset the tax levy. As I mentioned here, it's always important to keep and use a sustainable and realistic amount. It's real easy just to throw money in this to keep the levy down, but the next year, you're going to have a gap that's going to really bite you. So we've always been able to, to manage that very well. The other thing, as I mentioned here, you put too much in fund balance and not enough in the reserves, you know, you have to be careful of where you're putting your money. So what is a realistic amount? Based on our financial history, a, a good, sustainable amount is anywhere from 2 million to 2.5 million to appropriate or assign each year. Next, we have the tax surcharge reserve. We have about $812,000 in that. This is when a taxpayer challenges their, their assessment on their property, and they're successful, we have to reimburse them for that difference. If they're, they paid their tax based on $100,000 assessed value, the judge said 50, we have to give them back the equivalent of what the tax was on that $50,000. So we keep a very detailed list of this information. Every time we are petitioned with regards to any kind of a challenge, we, we keep track of it. Right now, the total amount that we foresee for the liability of the payout is about 1.2 million. It's been higher in past years. It's not bad. What really helped us was the, the housing market, the prices increasing. Taxpayers knew they didn't have much of an argument in front of a judge to say that my house is worth much less. That's starting to slowly change now as, as things kind of level off. So I anticipate that to go up slightly. With that said, I think that we do have to keep an eye on that, and we really want to strive to have it funded, fully funded, for whatever our outstanding liability is at the end of each year. We're not far. The next one is the ERS pension contribution and the TRS. Again, remember, Employee Retirement System, Teacher's Retirement System. The key thing to keep in mind is that both of these are highly tied to the volatility of the stock market and the, really, the global economic picture. It is very easy for either one of these to have a big swing in any one year. TRS, for instance, is based on a five-year average, which encompasses the stock market. So if you all of a sudden have a bad year in the market, it's going to affect us dramatically. Right now, we have about 918,000 in ERS and about $1,006,000 in TRS. Next, we have something called the Employee Benefit Accrued Liability Reserve. That's a long word for basically saying, this is a reserve to pay for the benefits that people are entitled to when they retire. Okay? So someone retires, or actually, if they resign and they're entitled to their unused sick time, we could use this to pay for that. Historically, we have not used it. Why? Because we've had the ability to utilize some of the surplus in the regular general fund without dipping into the reserve, which is good. And with that said, based on our historical level of retirements each year, I would tell you that that 515 is a good number. We don't have to, you know, strive to build it up any more than that. It's because we haven't added to it. There's been no, there's nothing added to it over the last three years. It was established previous. So the next one is unemployment insurance. Again, as I, as you might recall, I mentioned, there's two ways to pay unemployment as an employer. You can do the direct pay method, which, whatever someone receives from unemployment that worked for you, you have to reimburse New York State unemployment, or this percentage amount. School districts are under the direct payment method, so if somebody collects $500, I have to reimburse the state $500. With that said, based on the, over the last couple of years, the amount of unemployment benefits that we've been paying benefits that we've been paying, the proper amount in that, you know, ideally would be somewhere around $150,000. One of the things that's driving that up, as you might imagine, is the federal funds. We've hired a lot of people, and by the same token, we may not be able to continue their employment because the funding is drying up. Okay? So we currently have about $15,000. Ideally, we should have close to 150 in there. It's a big delta, but it's not a big number. Lastly, we have two capital reserves. The first capital reserve, we set up several years back, and it's been earmarked, per voter approval, to be used for our current $23 million capital project. Again, capital reserves are critical to have, helps you get things done without impacting the tax rate, because you're basically offsetting the local share. We also set up a second capital reserve last year with a maximum funding amount of $5 million. We were lucky enough at the end of last year to start to kick it off with $300,000 from our surplus. So again, what's important to keep in mind is we are calling for that third column, 2.5 million, we're talking about using or assigning from fund balance. The use of any other reserve or fund balance amount would really have to be a board decision, and it would really have to be based on the circumstances that we're facing each year. What I mean by that is, taking, for instance, the TRS/ERS reserve, we're not having a large increase in that. We don't need to take from there right now. It's best to keep it for another day when the rate goes up. With that said, we have two more meetings. At the next meeting, we will again review and prioritize our needs assessment for budget inclusion. We will also review any changes to state aid or any expenditures that come down the pike between now and then. And then lastly, we always have, even though the board has to adopt on the 20th, that is still a meeting that, you know, there can be many discussions before the board actually makes a vote. Any questions?
Thank you, Harvey. I just, yeah, want to clarify the fund balance. The assigned fund balance, if you go back to your slide two that you just showed us.
This one? Oh, slide two.
Slide two?
Yep.
Yeah, so you're proposing that we use 2.5 million, and then if you go forward to the slide you were just on, so you're saying right now in there is 4.1?
Correct.
And we're proposing that we use 2.5, and then that delta, that 1.5 and change would roll over?
Well, the-
Would roll forward in the-
Yes, into the budget, yes, yes. That 4.1 was a bit of an anomaly, you might remember. That was about 1.5 million we were able to put onto that to do the middle school air conditioning, because we were able to kind of supplant some things with federal funds. So it freed up money in the budget last year. It created a larger surplus than we envisioned.
Right.
And then we used that for the middle school air conditioning in the current year's budget.
So I just, I think I'm getting this backwards, and that's why I'm asking the question. We're going to leave 2.5, or we're going to leave 1.5?
Okay. So the way it works is 4.1 is what has been allocated to this year.
Okay.
Presumably, we're going to use it.
Got it.
Okay? But I also, historically speaking, if everything stays as it historically has, no catastrophic situations, we will have a surplus.
Right.
That will allow us to take it and be somewhere around 2.5 million.
Got it.
And we give it back. It's just a cycle.
Understood. So the 4.1 is last year's budget number coming forward?
Yes.
The 2.5 is the anticipated number with the anticipated surplus that will be there, available-
From this year that we use for next-
For this year, for next year. Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
And I just want to add a quick follow-up to that. So the, when you mentioned a 1% increase, that was assuming 2.5-
That is correct.
Assigned fund balance?
That is correct.
Got it. Okay.
If we were to go zero, as an example, we'd have to add another half a million dollars to that 2.5. We'd have to bump it up to 3 million.
To get it down to a 0% tax increase?
To get it to where we are now, to get it to balance.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. Or, well, I don't want to get into, I think that the next meeting's discussion is going to be on, this is revenue, on expenditures, on different combinations of-
Right.
How to get to different percentages that we desire.
Right.
Yeah.
Richard?
All right, so you just mentioned assigned fund balance, and I want to make sure I'm getting this correct, my understanding. Unassigned fund balance, that's for like an emergency, something that comes up, like a roof leaks, a floor collapses, something like that?
It's the amount that the state says we can have set aside without specifically designating it for anything yet.
Okay.
Okay? Assigned is, you are assigning it to this year.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Anything else?
Harvey, thank you for this presentation. It's always great to talk about revenue. Really is. Forget the expenditure side, but I just want to clarify one thing about how much surplus you're estimating. I heard 2.5 million is what you're estimating, and that's why we're putting that in the assigned fund balance for this new budget is currently what we're thinking about, right? We're not, but you're, so dollar for dollar, you're thinking, we're going to have 2.5 million, and that's all we're going to have, and we're going to put that in that balance?
No, I don't have a crystal ball to say exactly 2.5, but historically, we have a surplus of between 2 and 3 million. Okay? Now, if we have a surplus of 3 million, okay? What happens to that extra half a million? As you might recall, at the end of each year, we designate the assigned, and what's left, we put in, we spread out over the reserves or however we want to increase a reserve. That's how we add to those.
Exactly, right? So, but what is the real number of surplus that you estimate then? To include the notion that you want to add to the reserves, because I saw some numbers-
Right.
That you're thinking, hey, we need to add to these reserves at the end of the year.
Right.
So what's the total surplus that you're estimating right now?
Sure.
It's not 2.5?
I think 2.5 is the bottom estimate, and I think probably somewhere 3, 3.1 is the high end. So I envision having maybe 5 to 6 on a good note to put into the reserves.
5 to 6 hundred thousand?
Correct.
Just the-
Yes.
Not million?
Right.
Right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
But again, we don't, we have to be careful not to overestimate that 2.5 at this point, because if we do fall short, and we've assumed that we're going to have that, and we allocate all our needs that, up to that, we could be short. So it's best to be somewhat conservative in the assigned.
That I would agree with.
Okay.
I, it's good, always good to be conservative, but you've built in a 4% cushion for that rainy day fund.
Right.
And we've never tapped into it, have we?
We did.
We did?
Years back. We had a, we had a bunch of ceilings collapse at COH. We had to quickly grab some money from there, emergency capital project.
Right, so we challenged the system, the system worked.
Right.
And we stayed solvent, and we were able to continue with operations.
Right.
Right? So that's, that's a great data point.
So let me also mention, when you say you don't agree, keep in mind that if we put too much into assigned fund balance, and we don't have it next year, the future years, we have a gap there that we're going to have to fill pretty, in a bad way.
You know, the good Lord will provide, I guess. There's, we've had these conversations now for at least the time on the board, and-
Right.
And we've actually, actually been applying fund balances to the budget, and it's, and it's kind of worked out.
Yes, but they've been in, they've been in that range. We haven't been, you know, like I said, that 4.1 was an anomaly, but that was only made possible by virtue of the federal funds, the way that we could use them, some of them.
And, you know, not only the federal funds from COVID pandemic response, but also federal funds from investment rates and on our bank accounts, right?
Sure.
And that's, that's another 7-plus thousand, which brings me to another question. So we had about $16 million worth of capital reserves. They're, I'm assuming they're in an investment account, not a standard pass port or savings account, right?
Sure. So the majority of them are in what would be categorized as a money market account. They're earning approximately 4% right now.
Why the majority and not all?
Because we need it for working capital. We're restricted as to how many transfers we can make. We also have to, our main checking account, the way it works with main checking accounts for school districts is, there are certain expenses that the banks charge you. If you have a compensating balance, they offset those charges with that. We don't keep much in there. But again, not everything is in there. Keep in mind also that we don't have all of our state aid in the beginning of the year. So we're funding some of our operations with the flow of some of that cash.
So just to clarify, though, that $16 million of reserves is untouchable?
Well, it's untouchable.
And so you're not using that for working capital?
No, I said-
And so why is the $16 million not being fully invested?
The 16, it's not all 16 reserves. The 16 million in reserves is untouchable. The assigned fund balance and the unassigned, which is about 7 million, that is used for working capital.
Okay, the unassigned?
Correct.
Well, no, the assigned.
And the, both.
The assigned.
Both.
Both.
You can use both.
Do you?
If we need to, it's there, yeah.
But have you?
Well, it's, yes, we have, because as I mentioned, we don't get all of our aid at the beginning of the school year. We get it during certain periods of the year. Some of it, we don't get until the summer after. Okay, we carry it as receivable. That's just the way the state works.
Right.
So you do have to have cash flow.
But the taxes that come in far exceed the expenses that you incur upfront, right?
Right, early on. But that quickly gets drawn down. That gets drawn down.
Yeah, over time, but my, we'll talk offline.
In spring, in the spring, you're running, you're running somewhat dry with regards to your budget. Okay? And that's where you're waiting for those last payments of state aid that usually come in in June and August. Okay? So you do have to, quote, front some of it until the state pays you.
Okay. If you say so. I, what would be really helpful would be to see a couple things. The first would be the investment report, I think, of what we're actually earning. I appreciate 4%, on how much would be great. And what we're actually, I think that's something that you used to give us.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that-
Yep, the interest, I think, that's easy to share, the interest rate.
Or the audit committee, I don't know if the audit committee looks at that stuff, but that, that kind of report would normally, like, come to the board, I thought.
Right.
Right?
That interest rate is very easy. As far as the balances, you get the bank reconciliations as part of your board packet, so that's in there as well.
Right, I've never, I don't recall ever having a balance below 7 million. So on the unassigned and the assigned fund balance, I don't recall us ever being, like, close to being in the red, having to dip into working capital, like you said, but-
Yep.
I, I'll go back and look.
Okay. Pass?
Yeah, thank you. I want to go back to Jim's question, basically, slide two and slide five comparing the assigned fund balance. So on slide two, I see the math, you know, the projected assigned fund minus the deficit, the delta gives you the fund available for this, this need. So, which means the last column really was based on the 2.5 million. However, we know that from last year, the number is 4.1. I mean, so I can't relate the 4.1 on slide five to the 2.5 on this slide. I mean, why are you using this number, not that number, which-
4.1 is for the current year that we're in. That was assigned for the current year, the '22, '23 school year that we're in now. This 2.5 is for next year, '23, '24.
So you're, yeah, a projection, okay.
Yep.
Quick and easy, Harvey. I think I know what the answer is, but just to, oh yeah, I'm pointing clarity. The tax surcharge reserves, it was '96 and 2008, '12, '12. What do you do if an anomaly occurs? Like you said, you know, it's changing now, hopefully leveling off. What do you do if an anomaly occurs? You have to go over the '12. What line do you pull from?
There's a couple things. One is, if you, if you are projecting that you might have a surplus, you're going to have to eat into that surplus during the course of the year. Okay? Secondly, if it's really crazy number, a district does have the ability to borrow to pay that. If it was that large.
It wouldn't be an unassigned fund balance? Pull from there?
You could, you could.
Okay.
Quick follow-up. So the projected liability on open challenges is 1.2.
Yes.
So do we not expect that to be the final number, or do we have a plan for that $400,000 delta?
What happens is, that number is comprised of multiple years. It's not just one or two years. Some of these go back five, six years. So these don't get all settled each year, like boom, boom, boom. They get dragged out, you know? I've got ones that are, you know, seven years old.
So if you did a similar chart to what the open challenges were in 2021 and 2020, it would all look around 1.2?
It was a little higher at one point. It was a little higher. I think it was up, it was close to, I think, 1.8 at one point.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we've been able to manage it.
One more question, again, on the same point. So the assigned fund balance wise, it's exacting 4.1, 2.5, 4.1, 2.5, year to year. I mean, you know, like 20, 21, 22, and now.
Yep.
What's so magic about this 2.5 and the 4.1?
Yep. So again, the 4.1 in 2020 and the 4.1 in the current year, those were, those are, if I went back in time, which I can easily show you, you've got to go back 10, 12 years, the normal number is somewhere around 2.5. Those just happened to be two years that were anomalies based on certain things. So I explained to you the '22, the 4.1, that was from supplanting of federal funds for the purposes of being able to do the middle school air conditioning. The 4.1 back in '20, as I recall, that was when the tax levy was potentially going to go rather high, and the board decided to appropriate more money to keep the tax levy gentle, because those were some hard times that the world was on, and we just wanted to make it easy for the community.
So it's a coincidence that the number-
These are really just the two big years that you'll see in the long-
4.1 is a coincidence, I mean, it is. To be the same number, I mean, you know?
To keep the same number is really, I don't think that's sustainable.
No, no, I know, but if you compare 20 to 22, it just happened to be 4.1.
Yes.
Coincidentally, I mean.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that chart gives, because it only goes back those years, gives it a sense that 4.1 was the norm, but if you went back 10 years, you'd realize that 2.5 was the norm.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it really depends on how much you're actually spending versus what you've budgeted, and if you have not spent what you've budgeted, you have the ability to do it, and we haven't, and we did, so it's that kind of-
Or if you take in more revenue. Either way, it's going to generate more cash to your account.
And just to be clear, Harvey, we only know what the surplus will be. I mean, John was saying, you know, is it going to be 2.5? What is it actually going to end up? Could be as high as 3.1. You don't know that until June 30th. Is that right?
We don't know that until we close the books.
So it's even after, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. Got it.
Okay.
So if I could, just go back to the tax surcharge.
Yep.
Just following up on what Brendan was asking. So the number stayed somewhat stable year over year, but I know we've made payments this year. So is there a forecast of what that, that balance is going to look like? Is it going to be less than what it is right now? Or did you pay out of current operations? So how did that, how did that work? Because we have a reserve set up for that purpose.
Right.
Have you had to dip into it?
Recently, over the last?
No, this year.
This year, not at all, not yet.
Because we've spent some real good money.
Well, the budget itself, we budget a certain amount where we can to handle the prior year challenges that are successful. And right now, for this year's budget, that's $50,000. There's a budget line for that. We've laid out more than that. So the line is quote negative, but we've been using, you know, just, quote, the surplus for the year is absorbing that right now. It's not that significant, but yet it is absorbing it.
So it's coming out of daily operations?
Correct.
So you have yet to tap into the reserve?
Correct.
So it's only to the extent that current operations, because that's your first choice?
Absolutely.
And then your last choice is the reserve?
Right.
Yeah.
While we're digging deep into this, just out of curiosity, the 1.2, does that represent a projection of what you think it is? Or is that the cap of if every challenge in front of us, if every challenge, not in front of us, really in front of the town, or the several towns, if every challenge was successful, that would be the maximum liability? Or does that recommend, or is that, you say, hey, typically 42% of these are successful, so that's 42% of the open? I just made that number up.
Right. So, to your point, you're exactly right. That is not the total 100% amount that people are challenging, okay? That represents about a third of what's outstanding, because that historically is what our percentage has been. Anyone else?
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. Great, so that brings us to our second recognition of visitors. So anyone wishing to speak is invited to step forward to the microphone, identify yourself, and limit comments to three minutes. Thank you. And if you would like to leave your contact information, the intake form is still up by Lynda.
Hello? Hello? Christine Diaz. I haven't been here, had some other commitments. I would have come sooner, because I did want to acknowledge that Megan and I had a chance to meet over the winter break. I am really thankful for our conversation. I was able to share some of my more specific, granular concerns around special education, and I really appreciate that time that you made for me. I think, Brandon, you said something at one meeting that stuck with me, something like, take the yes and go? Is that what the saying is? Take the yes, or?
I'd like to think I didn't make it, like, I wasn't so aggressive about it.
No, 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 not to me, you were being joking.
That is generally what I was saying.
Yeah, 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 so it stuck with me, it wasn't to me.
Know when to take yes for an answer.
That's what it was. I liked it, it wasn't to me, so it wasn't like that. But, so I'm acknowledging, I'm taking the yes, right? I appreciate that we have a specialized teacher that was hired. I commend you, I didn't think it was possible, but hey, kudos to whoever was doing your search, because that was impressive. What I'm having difficulty, there was something I wanted to clarify for everyone, but I have to tell you, I'm sitting here, and I can't find the adjective to describe how I'm feeling. Because when I hear that there's a $3 million surplus of unassigned funds, I can't help but ask, where's People's Services? Why are they, oh, was I cut off on purpose? Why were they not banging on your door, saying, "We need more support, we don't have special ed in 11th grade"? That's just, I don't know if I'm sad, if I'm angry, disgusted, I really, I can't tell you, because I have to process that. But that's shameful, if you have that much money in surplus that we can't do something. And what I want to clarify is, because one time when I was up here, one of the closing comments from a board member was something around, well, people are asking for things, and it wasn't just about me, but I acknowledge, and we need to have budget approval for these things. And I get it, everything costs money, everybody has an ask, whether it's universal pre-K or co-taught for 11th grade regents classes. But what I want to make sure everyone understands, both publicly and here, is that special education as a term is huge in terms of what that encompasses. So when Harvey is giving a presentation about special education services and the funds needed for that, those slides that you see are primarily out-of-district placements, and those have a significant cost, and we should fund them, we're responsible for those students, I'm behind it 100%. What I'm here advocating for, and have been asking for you to pay attention to, is in-district services. They cost money, but they're not at the same level. And I've been saying all along, I think there's opportunity for creative solutions. I think people can put their heads together to come up with things that would be helpful. There's just ways we can do it. It's March, you know, and we're not going to be able to do anything this year. I hate to be defeated. The after-school tutoring, I appreciate it, but that's nothing new. That's been given every year in preparation for regents. So I just don't want anyone to think that that's like, oh, we answered her ask, because it wasn't, that wasn't the case. So I appreciate the conversation we had. I hope the dialogue continues for the sake of the district, but I, it's shocking to me. I also want to just bring to your attention, you have 107 kids that we're talking about in that universal pre-K. Out of 107, 20 of those students are likely to be dyslexic. Dyslexia affects one in five people. The severity to which it affects them varies greatly, but early detection is the best thing that we can do for people. And if you can catch it before fifth grade, it can actually be reversed. Unfortunately, my daughter wasn't caught that early, so that's why it's a constant struggle. And I understand there's more things happening now in the school than there were when she was coming through, but 20 kids is a lot in one grade. And so just to kind of keep that at the top of your mind as you're going through and hearing about different asks, there's more to it than just sending kids to BOCs or out-of-school placement. Thank you.
Excuse me, Brendan. If I could just add some clarity to that, about the surplus, I think it'd be helpful. When you say, you know, you found it, you know, a little disturbing with regards to a 3 million or so surplus, you have to keep in mind that we don't budget a surplus.
I'm sorry, unassigned fund, right? That's what it was?
The unassigned fund balance, right. That's our rainy day, the rainy day fund, you mean? Yes, okay.
So I guess I'm saying, I know it's in the background.
Christine, can you actually just speak into the mic again, just so you?
I know it's not supposed to be back and forth, but what I'm seeing as an unassigned balance is $3 million, that's a lot of money. A co-taught teacher, while I want them to be paid well, it's going to not really make a dent in that number. So, and I'm not, I'm not seeing that as your responsibility, Harvey, I'm saying, People's Services should be knocking down the door, saying, we can do more. And there's creative ways we can do it, there's legal ways we can do it, but that's really what was my, are you kidding me? Moment.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Anybody else? All right, that brings us to our closing board comment. So Larry, I'm going to start with you.
Yeah, I had some things written, ah, I think. Don't go away. I wasn't expecting to be first. Got it, okay. Well, first thing is, I'm looking forward to the multicultural night. It was great when it was in the middle school, I had a wonderful experience, the whole family did. We brought everybody along, and it was, it was an amazing evening. So I'm looking forward to it again. I think we've acknowledged some of our students tonight. There are so many more that do so many wonderful things that I think as time goes on, hopefully we'll have more and more of those recognitions as we go here.
All right, so, good evening, everyone. I want to start by thanking everyone here tonight. See, some community members, parents, teachers, I know we had some advocates for universal pre-K here. Thank you for coming out and participating. I think it's really important to see members of our community, stakeholders, engaging with the important work that we do here on behalf of our students. I want to thank Colton for doing double the work tonight and reading all the reports by himself. Thank you for representing the student body here in Cornwall. I too want to, again, congratulate the four students we recognized tonight. It's just a great example of how great and talented our students are here. And I had the pleasure of attending the High School Musical this weekend. And, again, another example of our talented students. And I'd like to thank them all. We'd be here all night if I did it individually, so I'm just going to keep it a very generic thank you. And it was a great show. And it really reminded me of the importance of investing in the arts. I always focused on the three A's, academics, athletics, the arts. And as a board, I think we've got to keep that in our mind every budget cycle, and when considering what to put in the budget each year. And this Wednesday, I'm looking forward to going to Multicultural Night. I think it's 5:30 to 7:30 at the high school, so, looking forward to it. With that, I hope everybody has a good night, and again, thank you for coming out.
Thanks, Richard. Sorry, I just looked at the empty chair. No, you're next, Jim, yeah. We're going to go to you, do a true, yeah, there you go.
Okay. Thank you, Brendan. So, yeah, a few notes I just jotted. Of course, always great to start a meeting and commend our students for great achievements. We've had state champions, national champions this year, having another state champion athlete, and statewide selections for music, for Madeline, Carson, Shane, where's the name I'm missing? Tyler, there we go, next line. Just great, great to start a meeting that way. Couple things that were mentioned in the good news by Colton. So, he mentioned the COH band recital, that was actually for all of the band, a sort of individual or duets amongst all the fourth graders. It just happened to be at COH, but it was all the elementary schools. So, I had one favorite number, of course, but that was a really good show. A lot of school plays we had recently. You mentioned the high school, COH and the middle school both had their play. I will say for the COH school play, that narrator, too, and Chip were two of the standout performers. And one thing that we didn't really talk about, and sadly, I was not able to attend, but the Community Coalition last week, that Joe Debold was instrumental, was putting on. I'm just really happy that that happened in our district. You know, certainly, nobody wants to talk about substance abuse, but we all know that it happens, and it is a danger. And the only thing, you know, burying our head in the sands and pretend, burying our heads in the sand and pretending that it's not an issue, would be a mistake. So I'm glad to hear that we're working with local law enforcement, we're working with, you know, Joe Debold and social workers, and we're making efforts on that, so. And I guess the last thing, I just want to say, I guess, as we get into next week's, next meeting's, budget decisions, it's difficult decisions, and I think the word of the day today is balance. You know, we talked about the fund balances, but the balancing act that we all have to do up at this day is here, when we're fielding the budget. You know, Lewis likes to say, if we think about putting the kids first, we'll win. And that's true. Sadly, we don't have unlimited funds. We have to keep everybody, we have to keep everything in perspective, and it's a complicated act, and there's a lot of puzzle pieces to put together. And we're going to do our best to meet all the needs of the district and keep the district moving forward. It's a challenging job, and it's a job that I know I take seriously, nobody else at this table takes seriously. And we're going to do our best to put forth a real positive budget that the community can get behind. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Pass.
Thanks. I'd like to start with congratulating our student. I mean, we honored tonight, I mean, whether, be it sport, be it art, music, you know, this goes to our motto of striving for excellence, and that's kind of the result. So, talking about striving for excellence, I mean, I can share with everybody that I do help my three kids with their homeworks, and how I do help them, basically, they do their homework, they bring it to me, and they say, Dad, can you please check my answers? And I do that. And by doing that, I mean, it kind of, I have exposure to what's going on in the classroom when it comes to assignments, homework. And, yeah, I mean, most of the time, I see that, whoa, I mean, these are good questions, and I'd be, I mean, and I, like, pleasantly, I mean, I see that, you know, my kids are answering those tough questions, I mean, I like it, you know? It kind of like, what, recently, I would say, one of my kids, I'm not going to say what kid, what level, what, you know, but showed me the assignment, I looked at the assignment, the assignment, that every single answer was correct, and and I thought like, whoa, that's too easy. And I asked my kid, I said, didn't you find it easy? He said, yeah, yeah, it was too easy. I said, like, why? I mean, that's not kind of, you know, usually what I see. I see a challenging question, what was wrong with that assignment? Anyway, so, I mean, I'm just mentioning is, just like for, you know, the teachers on all our five schools, like, listening to me tonight, keep that motto in mind, I mean, striving for excellence, I mean, you know, when, I don't know, I mean, I don't know the whole story behind it, but, again, every single assignment you give, every single exam you give. I was a teacher before I became board member, and I know every time I want to give my students a midterm or, you know, final, put those questions and think about them and think about them. Are they balanced? By passing my exam, did I achieve where I want my students to be or not? So it's not an easy job, really, to assign a homework for the student or assign an exam for a student. So keeping that motto in mind, striving for excellence really helps a lot. Thanks.
John?
Thanks, Brendan. You know, the funny thing about homework assignments, it's even harder to grade than probably give, because you've got to go through them all, right? But, not that I've ever been a teacher, but I've talked to many who kind of have that experience. I'm sure you did, too. Look, it's said that teamwork makes the dream work. And what I witnessed the other night at the high school was just awesome. I think it was the best display of teamwork that I have seen in this school district in my time here. And I've lived in the district for over 20 years. That play or musical, anything goes. The fact that all those kids, whether they were a stagehand, a musician, or the lead singer, or a lead part, they worked as a team, and they accomplished just greatness. It was fun to watch. And I think the teachers and the support that the mentors and the people that helped out with the costume changes and the building of the sets and all, just phenomenal, I think. What great role models for our kids. There are a lot of things in this world that we try to keep our kids insulated from, but of all the things that we could expose them to, drama at Cornwall, especially at the high school, is first on my list. Because it included kids that were athletes and state champs, musicians who were national or state-recognized, singers who were, as well as kids that really just wanted to be part of something special. And they contributed just like everyone else did, and it was magical. And so hats off to the teachers, the mentors, quite professionally done. And what's, what's most telling to me is that they did it in an environment right now where there's a lot of animosity or a lot of mashing of teeth when it comes to the district and the union. But I think what I saw is people rise above those issues and focus on what's truly important, and I've heard a number of my colleagues mention it tonight, is the kids. If we keep the kids our number-one focus, things will work out. So, great job. And I think one of board members has already said, great show, sure was. Growth mindset is really, really important, and without it, I don't think any of that would have been accomplished. I heard Harvey talk about the unassigned fund balance in response to one of our commenters tonight, I think Ms. Diaz, and I appreciate her comments as well as all those who made comments tonight. It struck me that we have a rainy day fund, and when it's raining on our kids, we're not putting ponchos on them, and we're asking them to go out and get wet. I understand we have needs from the building perspective and the grounds perspective, and things break. But what's more important than our kids? and things break, but what's more important than our kids? And so, when I think of the upcoming budget decisions that we're going to have to make, I think we need to be focused on the kids, especially those who have experienced what I'll call learning loss, and I know it's not a word, it's almost a taboo. I'm glad the mic hasn't cut off, because I do believe that there was learning loss here, and I think the data demonstrates it. As a matter of fact, the data shows that for Cornwall, the learning loss was pretty, pretty severe. As a matter of fact, even though the two houses of government at the state level have decided that we don't need to impose any minimums for this high-impact tutoring, I believe we do as a district, and I don't know if that minimum that the state was mandating or the governor was suggesting, now it's not going to happen probably, was sufficient. So, I'm focused on that, I think we all need to be focused on it. The data, I would like to hear more about the data and the amount of learning loss. Megan gave a great presentation about the highlights, and you know what? We could, we could spend probably a whole board meeting talking about all the great things that are happening here, but that's not the whole story, and I think it's time that we start focusing on the rest of the story, and that's to make sure that all the kids, like we saw at the drama production, are participating, are enjoying themselves, and are feeling, feeling, how can you say it? Feeling good about themselves, because if they don't feel good about themselves, they're not going to do well in the future. So, anyhow, learning loss, I think that's an important thing for our budget decisions as we move forward, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, John. Louis?
Thank you. Harvey, thank you for the presentation, much appreciated. I think Jim kind of, in my opinion tonight of everybody's responses, kind of summarized very eloquently our efforts tonight, and, you know, working with you and approaching this budget over the next, you know, few weeks. I don't know much more, what much more can say be said about the musical Anything Goes than John summarized. It was nothing short of spectacular, from my view. I mean, it crushed it on every level, crushed it on every level, like, you know, I've gone to the last dozen or so, before I even came to Cornwall, I've been going to them, and, you know, it keeps going, they're better, they're better, they're better. So, congratulations and kudos to those who were involved and kind of ran that ship, as well as congratulations to Tyler, Madely, Shane, and Carson, all, you know, some of which were involved in that, in that event as well. Seventeen thousand, 154 hours of collective reading at COH, I think that's fantastic. A very close person in my life always said that, you know, readers are leaders, and it's going to show, it's going to show, and this is just the beginning. Multicultural Night, it's a fantastic event. I encourage everybody to attend. COVID kind of put a damper on it for a few years there, but it sounds like it's back with a vengeance now, it sounds like it's back in force. Always, always a great event, something I always liked, and have a happy and safe break to all our students upcoming. Be safe, see you in a week or so. Go on vacation, have fun. Thank you.
Thanks, Louis. Yeah, not much to, not much new to add. I will say, I went to Anything Goes on Thursday night with my two kids. My wife was in the back, I think her, her hair was on fire. And then on Sunday, I went with the same group to Bad Cinderella on Broadway, and I'm very confident that they enjoyed Anything Goes more. That's not a bash on Bad Cinderella, which has been getting raked in the reviews, gutted like a fish. It was very enjoyable, but Anything Goes was just, it was phenomenal, and I think they, as Louis just said, not sure how much higher the bar could be raised, but it keeps going in that direction, and as someone with kids in the, in the larger program, as you could say, it's just encouraging and very satisfying to know that, without really doing any research to that end, we have found ourselves in a district with such a thriving arts program and people who are so dedicated to it, some of whom are in this room. So, to all those involved in continuing to make these productions an inspirational part of our community, thank you. Multicultural Night, 5:30 to 7:30. I'll be there after softball practice, hungry. I'm glad to know that the menu is everything that I love. Community Coalition, Mr. Joe Debold, thank you. That was just an extraordinary contribution to the larger dialogue in this community, and I think it filled in a gap that's always there, where, you know, it's not, you can have programs, you can have awareness, but that conversation needs to continue at home, and if it doesn't, then everything else will just be for naught. So, thank you for encouraging those conversations, which I'm sure have been happening since. Jim brought up a great point, and that I just want to underscore. This is a very complicated budget season. This is my fourth year on the board, so I'm, certainly, this is, I don't have the most extensive experience, but I would say this is going to be the hardest last couple of meetings budget-wise that I've been involved in, just because there are so many choices to be made, I mean, there's so many ways that this could break. So, I know that we're all going to approach it with the requisite amount of diligence and thoughtfulness, knowing that, how important this is and how much our input is really going to matter to the students of this district. Just ask for these next two meetings, you know, we give this our absolute best, which I know we will. And that is it. Thank you, everybody. A motion to adjourn the meeting.
Should we move?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good night, everybody.